Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Eliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the July 31st, 2013 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Williams has a dog. Come.
Now, this is a dog right here. We've got a boxer, year or two, year and a half old, friendly, and if you get down on your knees, he'll give you a big slobbery kiss. Found out in Jones Road in Wellington, it's going to be available for adoption on Friday. We have thirty-three dogs available, so if you're looking for something a little bit smaller, maybe a little bit more fluffy, come on through, take a look here. It looks like Ted right now.
Madam Clerk, since we just showed the dog, let's do right into Gennaro's proclamation, then.
Okay, I have it here. In the matter of expressing our best wishes to Gennaro Ramos on his retirement from Lorraine County Dog Kennel, whereas Gennaro Ramos announced retirement from his position as Chief Deputy Dog Warden on July 31st, 2013, and whereas Gennaro is being recognized for fourteen years of service to Lorraine County, beginning as an office equipment operator in the mailroom on July 6th, 1999, and whereas Gennaro was promoted several times on March 20th, 2000, to Deputy Dog Warden, and then July 30th, 2011, to Chief Deputy Dog Warden. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners express appreciation to Gennaro Ramos for faithful, conscientious, and rewarding service given to the Board, the Lorraine County, and its citizens. Further be it resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish Gennaro a healthy, happy, peaceful retirement as he pursues his hobbies and interests for many years to come. We wish Gennaro the best of happiness, peace, and good health to be enjoyed throughout his retirement. Witness our signature this 31st day of July, 2013, Ted Kayla, Lori Kokowski, and Tom Williams. Just want to say, Gennaro, you've always been really good with the dogs, you loved them and they loved you, and I'm sorry to see you go.
Congratulations.
Actually, I want to thank you too, Gennaro. Just want to thank you for, when I came into office in 2011, I came out to the dog kennel to kind of learn about it. You gave me the insight, you walked me around, gave me a lot of good information, so appreciate that, and good luck.
Congratulations.
Madam Clerk?
We'll do the tax abatement, which is for Jenny Family LP and Jenny Inc. Avon Requested Enterprise Zone Tax Abatement for sixty-five thousand square foot addition to its Avon facility at a minimum of eighteen million, one hundred thousand to create twenty-four new full-time equivalent jobs for ten years on real property on a sliding scale seventy-five to fifty percent. And Rick Cohen, Financial Officer from Jenny and Avon Mayor, James Smith, is here.
Pam, Dawn, who would like to start this, or are we going to bring Jenny right up? Mayor Smith?
Can't give me an open mic to...
I know that, that's why I waited last to ask you.
As all of you know, that Jenny Distributors came to us a few years back and they've just continuously expanded. They are one of our cornerstones, they also have met, every time we've done an abatement, they have met and exceeded all expectations, every time. They're not associated with the auto industry, which kind of helps us during recession times. During the recession, they added jobs, which Lorraine County can use all the jobs we can possibly get, and they've been a first-class corporate citizen. And I would like the Commissioners to put your seal of approval on it, because they have been really a good company. We've got a lot of great companies in Avon. We gained personnel working during the recession, which is unbelievable, you know, you couldn't wish for anything, and I always tell people, this is probably, maybe be my last time here until I get to retire, but ninety percent of what we do in Avon is luck and ten percent is we just haven't messed it up yet, so thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mayor. Someone from Jenny Corporation?
They're drawing straws.
Yeah, nobody wants to come up.
So, I'm Vince Pickleamini, this is Rick Cohen, Rick is our Chief Financial Officer, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to field them. We've been in Avon since ninety-seven, we've enjoyed the support of the city and the Commissioners since then, and we're just a happy participant and thankful for your support and ask for it going forward.
We appreciate your investment in our community, we really do. Rose, the whole family, you've got to do a great job, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't have a problem with any other questions, Commissioner, I'll move to approve.
These are one of our easy decisions, so yes, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
On with your day, guys, go back to work, make some money.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You sound like Rose. If you didn't jump out of your seat and be like Rose, you gotta be bubbly and everything.
I don't think I could pull that off. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have seven or eight minutes, you want to go into the Resolutions now, please, before we start the sales tax hearing, because they are advertised for nine forty-five?
Yes. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
There are no advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
There is no travel. Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summer sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a couple personnel actions, potential hires at Solid Waste Collection Center, Dog and Kennel, Golden Acres. Also want to brief you on a conciliation hearing that we had yesterday with the Teamsters, and update you on ongoing bargaining with United Auto Workers of America, and also potential sale and purchase of real estate. Those topics are allowable for executive session talks under the Sunshine Act. At the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those issues that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of July 24th?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, advertise bids for Oberlin Accessible Pedestrian Signal Project. Notice to be in the Journal on August 2nd and 9th. August 14th at 10:00 AM is mandatory pre-bid meeting at Oberlin Municipal Light and Power System at 289 South Professor Street, Oberlin, and bid opening at 2:00 PM on August 28th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve and enter into various lease agreements effective retroactive to July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, for space at 42485 North Ridge Road, Eliria, with cost based on square footage as determined by MAXMAS. Job and Family Services, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty square feet, for a total annual amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars, with monthly payment of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. And child support, sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five square feet, for a total amount, annual amount of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, with monthly payment of seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize purchase of service contract with information technologies and training, Norwalk, to provide Microsoft Access programming and staff training, effective October 1st, 2013, through September 30th, 2014, at a value not to exceed fifteen thousand. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approved as to form, and to amend for changes in content or increase.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Workforce, approve and enter lease agreements with WGA for nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety square feet, of finished office space at 42495 North Ridge Road, Eliria, effective retroactive July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014. Total rent is eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, payable monthly at seven thousand, seventy-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Clerk Courts, approve and enter lease agreement with MICA Properties, the third LLC for Mayflower Square, consisting of one thousand, eight hundred square feet, at 2290 Kreske Drive, Amherst, effective November 1st, 2013, through October 31st, 2016, in total amount of seventy-two thousand, payable two thousand per month. Clerk Court's office will relocate the title office from Lorraine County Visser's Borough, Levitt Road, because the current space is inadequate for amount of business, and new location is doubled to better serve taxpayers without incurring high renovation costs.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, I actually went to contact the White House, or Lighthouse Village, City of Lorraine, White House. Talking with them, they're giving, they're open for negotiations on that. We could actually have the, this title office right next to the BMV, may make more sense for residents. Only had a brief chance to talk with Ron Nabokowski about it. Like to hold this for a week, so I could have further discussions with him.
Oh, putting it in Lighthouse Village instead of in the?
Still be next to motor vehicles?
Right.
I don't have a problem holding it, is there?
No, I don't have a problem, that's fine.
Hold it for a week.
Okay, thank you.
Withdraw your motion.
Yeah, withdraw.
I'll withdraw my second.
Under Common Pleas, Create Fund 2830 to recognize the grant fund's expenditure in relation to Veterans Court.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Well, I'm sorry, wanted to talk about this, I think it's great what the Common Pleas Court is doing, especially with the grant money. Do have a concern though, when the grant money runs out. Have you had talks with Judge Walters?
Actually, I did Monday.
And what's his views if the grant money goes away?
Well, he's going to continue to chase the grant money, and then it would be either an expense of the general fund, or the veterans could request it into their annual budget. So I mean, there's not much.
I don't think they can even request it in their annual budget.
They can't, they're allowed to under revised code. Jerry, are you familiar with the Veterans Court in regard to Veterans Services? My understanding is they can request it?
That's, I haven't looked at it a while, but that is my general belief regarding that.
Correct, we had this talk a few years ago.
I know at the Veterans Commission meeting, they felt that they could not pay for it, they could pay for one person.
No, they could pay for the court. The revised code allows that, this discussion's been going on.
Okay, so this will become another court mandate, basically.
It's one day a week is all, I mean, it's not a major thing, and what Judge Walter has said, that, you know, they're covering most of the expenditures. We've had to give them advance, but they've got money coming back, but yeah, it would end up a general fund expenditure, or a Veterans Services Commission expenditure.
I'm just, I'm concerned that it's going to grow, and it's going to be something more that the courts will continue to order, so.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Engineer, approve and enter in Jobs and Commerce Economic Development Agreement between the State of Ohio, ODOT, and Lorraine County to set forth responsibilities and provide funding in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand, forty-six percent of the total cost, from Lorraine County Engineer and City of North Ridgeville to complete the stabilization on the Sugar Ridge Bridge project from Bridge Account. Authorize engineer to execute documents on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors, approved as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize engineer to execute contract approved by ODOT between R.E. Warner and Associates Westlake for construction, administration, and inspection services for Cali Road graft and widening and resurfacing project. The two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars will be funded eighty percent federal highway administration through NOACA, and twenty percent OPWC issued to grant awarded to the engineer.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Upton? It is nine forty-five.
I was going to say, we are on time.
Right on time.
Couldn't have planned that any better.
I'll read these, and I do have sign-in forms that everybody needs to sign, we'll put them on both sides.
Yeah, please, if you could sign those for the public hearing?
This is the first sales tax hearing, consider the following. For the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a continuing period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-quarter of one percent, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of quarter of one percent. Two, for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a continuing period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-half percent, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of one-half percent. Three, for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-quarter of one percent, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of one-quarter of one percent. Four, for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5739.021 by the rate of one-half of one percent, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of one-quarter, one-half of one percent. And then, this was advertised in both papers, on July 12th and July 19th, and the second hearing will be this Monday, August 5th, 2013, at 5:30 PM.
The Commissioners are discussing putting a sales tax on the ballot. Some discussion was brought up a few weeks in these meetings in regards to doing a rollback or cancellation, suspension of property taxes and/or rollback of inside millage. I think most of the discussion since has talked about if this goes forward, that there would be a rollback in just the inside millage. Is that agreeable by the Board?
Yes.
Since our discussion is not to go after the 911 levy or the crime lab, drug task force dollars. I can open up to the Board, or we can open it up to residents. I have a map here of the local tax rates by county, effective January 2013. All surrounding counties are higher than us. Cuyahoga's seven and three-quarter, going to go to eight percent as of September 1st. Summit will be at six and three-quarter percent. Medina will be at six and three-quarter percent. Lorraine Counties will be at six and a half percent with the state imposed sales tax. Erie County just passed and imposed a sales tax, an additional half a percent. They will be at seven-two-five, starting October 1st. Huron is currently at seven, they'll be at seven-two-five with the state move, and Ashland will be at seven percent. So I know a lot of discussions have gone on about, you know, sales tax, you know, if we keep it low, they'll buy more here, well, we know that isn't true. It's never played out that we get more because we're less, we get less because we charge less. And since sales tax is one of our driving economic bases for operating county government, the Board has a responsibility, either through imposing or putting on the ballot, a sales tax increase to support county government and its operations. As you know, through the years, through myself and Commissioner Kokowski, we've three times done sales tax through imposing, and through emergency, and through putting it to the ballot. We haven't been successful. Those of you following the state budget the last few years, they continue to attack local government funds, they keep cutting us back and telling us we still have to do our same jobs. Costs have increased, the private sector has grown, the economy is coming back, but Lorraine County Government has stayed stagnant in regards to charging of sales tax. And we are looking at next year, based on the numbers from our Budget Commission, which gives the Commissioners the stick to work off of, they've lowered our expected revenue next year down about forty-four and a half million dollars, with an expected carryover of six million, which would put us to fifty to fifty and a half million dollar total budget to work on, with fifty-six million dollars in requests. Those include about two-point-three million dollars from the Court of Common Pleas and Domestic Relations Court, and about a three-hundred thousand dollar increase to Veterans Services on top of normal increases. So I think the Board has a responsibility to talk about this and have some action. At that, I will turn it over to my Board members.
Well, according to our Budget Director, our estimated shortage for next year is going to be about five-point-seven million dollars, and that's just bottom-line, basic budget. We have not done any kind of repairs to our buildings, we're just kind of putting everything on hold till the economy turns around or we get additional revenue. I believe in, the six million dollars that we're short right now, is like six million dollars in interest income that we don't get, that we got years ago, so putting this on as a temporary, hopefully in the future, our revenues will come back and we can eliminate the half percent sales tax. I also believe that most people, especially homeowners, will enjoy this type of tax rather than a sales tax. When you're a homeowner, your neighbors decide whether or not you're going to pay an increase in your property taxes. With the sales tax, you decide if you're going to buy that big screen TV or not, so I think it's a lot fairer of a tax, and I'm hoping that the voters will see it that way, and...
Yeah.
I guess we'll see what they have to say.
Yeah, and just because it was brought up, you know, my campaign promise is I would never impose a sales tax, and I stand by that. I believe that the residents of Lorraine County make the decision on what type of county government they want. With that, there are costs that come along with running a county, and we're seeing a depleted, depleted fleet of deputy cruisers as well. We need about six-hundred thousand dollars to replace out the vehicles there. I did a ride-along with the Sheriff's Department, we had a person in custody, the vehicle broke down, and we actually had to go through and contact a tow truck to come in to get the vehicle, and then contact another deputy to come out and help transfer individual who was also intoxicated from one vehicle to another. I believe government is about safety, and in this case, it was very unsafe for the deputies to have to make that transfer with the individual in that type of condition. Looking at the numbers here, if we went with a quarter percent increase, we would be still one of the lowest counties with the sales tax in our area. If we went to a half percent increase, we're going to be in line with the majority of the counties around us, Medina would just be lower, but it's up to Lorraine County voters. I'm looking at a temporary three-year sales tax, because I, there may be a change, we may get more investment earnings as they come back. I believe it also shows that gives the voters to see the county Commissioners work towards better solutions on how to operate here, and you can see what we're doing in the three years. And then with the property tax rollback, it gives temporary relief to owners, it's going to help our seniors out, and everybody else that owns property. It's a fair tax, it's a consumption tax, and as Ms. Kokowski said, you decide where, what you're buying, and it's not an automatic take of the government on the taxes, so I think we should open up for discussion now.
Anyone wishing to address the Board on this issue this morning? If you join us up at the microphone here? Wow. Oh, Fisher Blair!
You had to say wow. We're doing this in alphabetical order.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Mr. Cordez and Mr. Ennis?
Could you introduce yourself and tell us where you're from?
I'm not sure who I am this morning. My name is Betty Blair, and I had the privilege of sitting in your seats for twenty years. I just came in support of what you're doing. When I left in 2010, I was in support of a sales tax then, and I still am. I have a decided purpose this morning, I just wanted to remind you of it. For the past year and a half, or two years, I've been a member of Lorraine County Transportation Coalition, which is promoting public transportation for Lorraine County residents. There's a decided lack, as you know, and anything I'm going to say here, you already know, I'm just here to kind of remind you of it, because you have a lot of other things on your mind. But I know you've returned some dollars to whoever gave them to you in the first place, because we were not able to match it. To me, that's a crying shame for Lorraine County. We're one of the ten largest counties in the state, and we ought to be able to match those dollars and provide those additional services to our residents. One of the great loves of my life is the West Shore Commuter Rail Project, which you have participated, Lease Commissioner Kayla and Commissioner Kokowski participated with me on getting the first step of that project with the match monies from former Congresswoman Sutton. And we're at a standstill, we can't go anyplace, because we don't have the basis in our public transportation. And before I take a ride to the big skies, I would like to see commuter rail become a reality. And so I would like to applaud you for doing this again. I also don't think I'm in favor of giving any rebates, although that's not my decision to make. Don't play with the taxing code. You need a sales tax, we need a sales tax. Put it before the voters, and don't say we're going to give you something back. Say what you're going to give them with the additional monies. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will not come back on August 5th, because I'm going to a singing affair. Love you all, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board today? Wow, this was a quick one.
Well, no, I think there's some people, because I talked to them before the meeting, that had some questions, they may just be a little shy on it.
Well, come on up, don't be shy, this is the opportunity to participate in government, and I see him smiling back there. Come join us.
The, I guess, while we have one person coming up, one question I have is what people attending the meeting think about the rollback in property taxes?
Hello, my name's Ron Friend, and I live in Amherst Township. I guess nobody else wants to speak, but, I mean, we've went this route before, I mean, we've, you've had the taxes on there before, people have said no, so why do you keep bringing it up, and why do you keep threatening the Sheriff's Department?
We're not threatening anybody.
It seems like he's always threatening the Sheriff's Department.
Sir, it's our largest budget outside of the courts.
That's fine.
Okay, and it has to be funded.
Exactly.
So it's not threatening, it's just issues within dollars. Lorraine County doesn't have enough revenue. We are the lowest in the state, tied with three other counties, and we're the ninth largest county.
That's great, we should be. That's great, you want to be the lowest.
No, you don't, it doesn't work.
I mean...
People don't drive from Westlake to Lorraine County to shop, in large proportions.
I have not shopped in Cuyahoga County because of the higher tax rate. I have done that on high, bigger items in the past.
Okay.
I have done that.
You're one of the few, then, but overall, it doesn't generate, we don't generate enough income, so we're going back to the voters.
Well, I think what's changed, though, too, and one of the reasons I'm considering supporting, putting this on the ballot and giving it to the voters to decide, is you it really handcuffs us on what we can do. So, when they ask for an additional two point three million dollars, we really don't have a say on what we're able to do with that budget. And they're going to get that money no matter what. And then it becomes, where do we go through and do the reductions? How do we change the, our funding levels here? And you can go through and you can ask for a sales tax increase, or you can go through and you can do reductions. And I believe that you always present that to the residents, and you allow them to decide, you know, at election time.
Safety is one...
And we've done the reductions.
Safety is one of the last places you'd want to go, isn't it? Safety and insurance.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you on that one.
Isn't safety one of the last places you'd want to go?
Absolutely. I agree with you. But, you do get to a point where, and, you know, I'm a strong supporter of the Sheriff's Department, and I don't want to see anything get cut from the Sheriff's Department. And I know that they have issues right now with their vehicles. You've got vehicles out there that have almost two hundred thousand miles. If you take a look at the cities, they actually have contracts where once a vehicle hits over a hundred or a hundred twenty thousand miles, they get new vehicles. We haven't been able to provide that to the deputies, and I think that's something that we need to try to get some funding for, to get these new vehicles for them.
And we have stayed away from touching the Sheriff's budget over the years, other than the one time we had to do the major cuts when rates just tumbled. We have not, and the Sheriff's been a great partner with us.
We've actually added to the Sheriff's Department while we've cut other departments, so we have not threatened safety.
That's what you see in the papers all the time. They say, "Well, we'll have to cut the Sheriff's Department."
Well, there's only a certain amount of departments that we have discretion over. Like, like Mr. Williams said, the courts, they order their budget, the veterans order their budget, the Board of Elections order their budget. The rest of county government has to come from what's left over. So, if the courts ask for more, we have to take it from somewhere and share some of those.
Have you talked to the judges and given some kickback to it? I mean, I know they have jurisdiction on doing it.
We'll have a disagreement on that, but...
They told us they're overloaded and need more additional dollars to operate.
I don't know. I just...
The problem is, the local government fund has been cut, like I mentioned earlier, you might have walked in later, but we're like six, seven million dollars lower today than we were like in two thousand and eight in interest income. You just can't make up six million dollars with people. We're service. We're not a, we don't build a product, so most of what we do is service. That means we have to lay off people.
And I'll tell you another thing that's going to happen. When the economy goes better and you guys get more funds, because this is a percentage. This is not a, this is not a levy or anything like, this is a percentage. So, when the economy gets going, do you guys think you're going to cut back on the taxes?
Well, it's only a temporary.
It never has.
Temporary.
Temporary is, temporary is never going to be temporary.
It goes back to the ballot, to the voters, Mr. Friend. That's why it is. The discussion so far has been a three-year temporary sales tax increase.
And people get used to it, and they'll say, "Okay, well, we'll go ahead and keep it." That's what usually happens.
The voters would say they'd want to keep it. We couldn't do that.
It would have to go up on the ballot again.
In three years.
I just, I've never seen one rollback.
Well, they just happened in Medina County. They said a quarter percent rollback, didn't get reapproved. I've seen them happen all the time.
Just don't think it happens that much.
Well, it's like other levies that come up. You do like a five-year levy, and then it comes up again, and you can vote for it. And they refer to it as like renewal levies. You're right, but the voters are the ones that are deciding on that. It's not the government officials or school officials that just keep it there. The vote, it has to go in front of the voters, and they have to make the decision on there. Three years is what we're looking at because we're hoping that the economy is going to get better, continue to get better, and that we're going to see higher investment returns where we won't need that additional funds. And, you know, we're talking about different things, and I believe that if you go through, one of my concerns was, if we get too much money, it's just going to be spent on other things. And that's why I was looking at trying to do a property tax reduction as well, kind of give some of the property owners a break up to, we did the one point four inside mill. It would be about forty-three, forty-four dollars per hundred thousand dollar home. And working it that way.
How is that going to work though, Tom? How is that going to work?
How would that work?
How is it, how does it work?
Well, what would happen is if the three-year sales tax increase would be passed, the Board of Commissioners, and I asked the Board, and they agreed to signing a resolution stating that in January two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, that they would agree not to collect the inside millage on the property tax. And then, the way it works is your property tax is collected a year ahead of time, so it would be a reduction on your property tax bill in fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
The odds are, if you're a hundred thousand dollar value home with an average, you know, fifty to sixty thousand dollar year income, you would gain because the increased sales tax, it only worked out on our old numbers. We haven't run the new numbers because we haven't passed anything yet, would be thirty-four or thirty-five dollars, while you see a forty-six dollar savings on your property tax.
For the property owners.
But at the end of that period, don't you have the discretion of just raising that? I mean, putting that back in?
Yes.
So, and that's probably what you'll do.
I mean, we would be accountable for that.
Yeah, but you may not be on the Board anymore.
Well, no, the...
No, it has to be done yearly. We can't do a three, I think Tom misspoke there. You can't do a three-year resolution because you can't handcuff a board. Every year, the Commissioners, during the tax period of three years, we would do a resolution not to collect up to a certain millage amount of the inside millage.
Well, no, we had discussions on this, and Jerry, because the majority of the Board would be here for, till two thousand sixteen, we could do a resolution up to that, correct? Because we're not...
You can do a three-year resolution, but I think the decision not to collect is always reviewable.
It's done yearly. Right. Our resolution could be for three years. So, if you have a new Board member, if I wouldn't get reelected, Ted and Warrior are in office until the end of two thousand sixteen, so you would have the majority of the Board here. So, they would be held accountable. So, if in two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen, they decided not to collect or forgive or reduce that property tax, they would be facing reelection at that time, the voters.
You'd still put it back in place, I think. That's just my personal opinion. Even though you were going to go back to the voters for, to get reelected or whatever, I just don't think you would, it would just...
It's your personal opinion.
Yeah, it's my personal opinion.
If you're ever done anything like that, Mr. Friend, what we said we're going to do, we've done. I don't think, I don't know where your history, where you're saying you don't think we would do that, so you're kind of...
You just don't trust government.
I don't trust government. I don't trust you guys.
Can you in a personal, I mean, explain where any of us up here have done something we said we weren't going to do?
Personally, no. I really hadn't come here to speak. If I would have done my research, I would have probably been a little bit prepared.
You can come back to our August fifth meeting.
Yeah, I know you're having another meeting.
Come to that one.
I'd be better prepared, but, I don't know, it just seems like nobody's speaking or anything like that, to object to this kind of stuff.
We appreciate you participating. We really do.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you look at your bill. You spend a hundred dollars, there's six dollars and, I don't know what, fifty cents dollars worth of tax on it. It's a hundred and six dollars.
Right now.
It would make it six dollars and seventy-five cents, and with the state increase, it would make it seven dollars.
Right. Doesn't sound like much, but it's like your grocery bill. Every little bit adds up, and pretty soon, you don't have any money. I mean, you could take all my money, and you could buy my groceries for me.
And you know that we don't, you don't get charged on food. You don't get...
Oh, I know that.
Or gasoline.
I know that.
Or medicine, or, you know, things that you have to have.
Or we could do a detour and tax the utilities, you know. I mean, they taxed themselves out of business, basically, into bankruptcy. So, that's just my sense.
I just want you to note, too, we don't get the entire, you know, six and a quarter percent right now, too. The state's taking the majority of that.
State's taking the majority of it.
Staying here, and the local government's a lot less.
Right.
So, for example, you brought up the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department budget's about twelve and a half million dollars a year. In nineteen ninety-five, Lorraine County passed a quarter percent sales tax to pay for the county jail and all the operations. That generates approximately seven and a half to eight million dollars a year. So, there's four and a half million dollars a year...
Sure.
That it doesn't get, which has to come out of the general fund, which is the county's half a percent sales tax, Mr. Friend. So, we take another eighth of a percent to help fund the county jail. I mean, it's not that we're not doing the sheriff and the jail, so, I mean, it's, we take half of the collected sales tax in Lorraine County that comes to Lorraine County, goes for jail operations.
That's fine. That's good.
Where's the one number? If we looked at our estimate shortage, I was going to bring this up actually, since you're talking about the Sheriff. If, I think this year, we're on about eight point five million dollars is what a quarter percent would bring in. That's what Craig Snodgrass told me yesterday.
I can't speak to what Craig said.
Okay. I didn't know if he had conversations with me. He said we were on track for seventeen million dollars for the half percent, so...
It's real high.
Yeah. I was talking to him about the dog license yesterday, and he brought that up to me because we were talking about, he needs a vehicle, too, so... But even there, if you put it at, we'll be over two million dollars more than what our estimate shortage is, and...
I'm not arguing that. I think we'll bring in fifty-two, fifty-two and a half million dollars next year. That's what I've been saying. Fifty millions is lean.
But if we go through, and we actually have that extra money, I wanted to see the six hundred thousand dollars go towards the vehicles for the deputies. And then, we can also take a look at, we've had a, you're from Amherst Township?
Yeah.
Are you in Hidden Valley?
No.
Okay. Hidden Valley has been getting hit with multiple burglary crimes down there, people breaking into the house, to the cars, and then actually even getting worse where they're breaking in when people are in the home.
They caught them. Well, they caught two people. They don't know who they were.
Well, they caught two of them, but, a friend of mine was home with her children, and someone actually entered the house with it, so, safety issue there. So, I would even want to take a look at what we could do with that two million dollars that's going to go above the estimate shortage for additional support for the deputies, because we went from thirty-one deputies, I think we're at twenty-two now.
I don't know the Sheriff's Department.
Somewhere around there, so we do need some additional deputies as well. And by doing it...
You're losing me time. What, two million? I mean, if we don't pass a sales tax?
No, if we do pass a sales tax, we would have an additional eight million dollars over the shortage. So, putting some of that money towards the Sheriff's Department as far as vehicles and also personnel, because I think it's needed there. They're spending more and more time in the municipality, too, with warrants.
Can we get that in writing?
Believe me, we've done...
I don't have a problem putting anything in writing.
And the other thing is, what's the difference between the point two-five and the point five? I mean, is that, are you going to have extra money left over with the point five, or you just want point two-five?
Point two-five, based on doing a property rollback, would be about dead even.
Yeah.
You'd get anywhere.
Yeah.
The half percent would cover our shortfall, capital improvements, which include rolling stock for the Sheriff's Department. I mean, we have, we haven't fixed anything yet, nothing.
Roofs.
Roofs, garages.
Yeah.
There's, capital improvements have to be done. Really needed.
How much greater does it cover from your deficit that you're thinking, that you're going to have? How much more than the deficit that you think is going to occur in the future will that cover, the point five?
I don't understand the question.
I mean, you're, you want a point five increase in taxes.
Correct.
Because you have a deficit, correct?
Six million.
Six million. How much does the point five raise versus the point six? How much do you estimate?
Seven and a half to eight million dollars difference. But then, when you roll back the larger amount of the one point two mils...
Of the property tax.
Right.
Well, if you went at the one point four mils, it's eight point two five million for the one point four mils. So, basically, with the reduction of the millage, you wipe out a quarter percent of what you would bring in in revenue.
So, you're only collecting the quarter percent. We have about a six million dollar shortfall.
Mm-hmm.
It would bring in about eight million dollars. We have about two million dollars for capital cost.
Okay.
It's not extra, it's the capital cost we have to take care of.
What do you mean?
Our budget is just like bottom line salaries, utilities, things like that, but we do have other costs that we're not taking care, things that we're not taking care of that need to be done, such as, you know, capital improvement costs and all types of things. So, transit, like we talked, Ms. Blair brought up, different things.
Isn't that figured in in your deficit? No?
No, those aren't budgeted for. We don't even have capital costs. We have pulled all those out to meet our budgets.
Right. We're just bare bones right now, bare bone budget.
Okay, the property tax one is only a proposal. The other proposal, isn't it, just to do the point five? I mean, I saw that...
Take it hand in hand.
Well, no, there's actually out here not to do the rollback also.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We won't approve anything till next week. The feeling of the Board, based on discussions we've had, is we weren't going to go after the paid-for levies that people vote on, like nine-one-one and drug passports. And those are minimal.
Right.
But the property rollback, at the Commissioners' discretion, we can ask that to not be collected. So, that is a direct effect on property owners. Property owners saying they get the brunt of everything. That's what people, you know, that's their feeling. So, here, if we go to a consumptive tax versus a property tax base for county funding.
But I thought there was two proposals. There was a proposal for like a point five, yeah, maybe four. Point two-five, point five, point five with property rollback.
Right.
So, you guys are long towards the property rollback. Is that my correct?
Correct.
Right. It was just by discussions with people, I've been going door-to-door and talking with people, mostly homeowners, they would like to see some type of property tax relief. If you do a quarter percent property tax relief, or quarter percent sales tax increase with a property tax rollback, it's about fifteen, seventeen dollar break annually for a property tax owner. If you went to a half percent sales tax increase with a one point four mil rollback, then it's about forty-three, forty-four dollars per year, per hundred thousand dollar home.
Right. Okay. I'm done.
I appreciate it. It's actually good dialogue and...
I realize you guys have a hard job. I realize you've got to have money. I realize that the state is cut back, but I just get so tired of tax raises. I mean, you get tired of it. I mean, our property tax just went up, I don't know, three, four hundred dollars. It's, it gets tiring.
Well, here, we rolled back a little bit for you.
Well, that'd be good, as long as you keep that rollback in there.
It would be for three years on that.
At the end of three years, I'm worried that you're going to say, "Well, we get this, we need more money," so...
Well, I don't think the voters would approve it to go back on for three more years if we went back on what we gave them as a guarantee on passing it.
Yeah.
I think we'd get pretty well beat up.
Oh, yeah, the newspapers would...
People here would pretty much take us to task on that, Mr. Friend.
Yeah. I don't know.
You must not read the papers. They like taking us to task.
Well, you know, the one thing is, in the newspapers, we always, you know, the G S L newspaper, so, we agree majority of the time on things. The things that we don't agree on, maybe a little confrontational, but I think everybody up here sticks to the word. If we say something in a public meeting, we're going to stand by that. And, you know, that's a Republican saying good things about Democrats, I think they would say the same thing about me, think me...
You gotta think about that.
All right. That's the, for the dog comment, right? But, you know, the Board here really has, when we come out and we make a commitment to the public, we do stand by it as a Board.
Correct. Even when it's two, one the other way, if that's the direction of the Board, we carry that forward. So, I mean, we do, and, you know, not to argue with Mr. Friend again, though, when we say we're doing something up here, I don't think even the papers can say that we've gone back on that over the years. You know, we are, the public elects us to do a job, and that's what we do, not making everybody happy. Nobody likes taxes. Lorraine County can't continue to provide the services it's mandated to provide, based on the amount of revenue we bring in. We're putting an opportunity to the voters, it's being discussed up here, that it roll back to the property owners based on doing a sales tax instead of. And then, that becomes each and every person's ability on what they want to buy or not buy that's taxable. And it doesn't affect any of their really day-to-day needs. I mean, as we have Kirsten back here, Pattons, you don't charge sales tax on your fruit and produce, correct? On the produce and vegetables?
No, but we have some substantial expense.
See, I was going to get you up here eventually. Tell us who you are, Kirsten.
I'm Kirsten Hill, and I'm from Amherst Township also. And my husband and I own Pettons Farm Market in Amherst Township. We do pay some sales, we pay sales tax as vendors because there are products that we buy that we don't resell, but they're part of our supplies.
I understand that.
So, we're obligated to pay some pretty good-sized sales tax. You have to package everything that you, you know, retail out the front door. In terms of, you know, arguing for or against the sales tax, I guess one thought that I have is it's important that the community has, you need to have a dialogue, ongoing all the time. And then, when this situation comes up where you feel you need to generate more revenue and your idea is to do it through a sales tax increase, then they have confidence in what you've been doing all along. So, I know that records are available for the public to request. But you might actually go on the offense and provide records, provide some general large numbers, provide ideas of what the departments are in the county. Just make it a regular reporting, you know, every six months in some fashion or another. So, they know, okay, a certain amount. How much did you say is for the sheriff of the total budget?
Except for the jail.
The jail's about $12.5 million, but about...
About a quarter?
Eight million that gets paid by the quarter percent. The general fund does the other $4.6 million, I think is what we allocate.
Well, I don't, I just want to know, I mean, when you start to get down into the details, that's where you lose, send you lose to people.
This information is back, if anybody wants, this information is back there on the back counter.
Yeah, I believe it's, this is also on the website to kind of show us the expenditures over from 2008 to 2013. It's, I understand what you're saying, trying to get it out to more individuals.
And keep it simple, too.
Yes. I mean, you talk about, you know, actual expenses, you know, and things that you need, you know, you're kind of mix things in, what we'll do with this money when it comes. But I think historical information is good. And you just go historically, the sheriff is one quarter of the budget, the court is this percentage, whatever it be. The other thought about providing that information is, how do we rank against our neighbors in our expenses? How are they taking their revenues and allocating them amongst the departments? That stuff's out there, and the people in the accounting department of the county would be more familiar with how to get that. And if it's, if it's a telling story that doesn't look favorable on the county, well, then I suppose you don't want to, you know, reveal it. But it can also be in the process, provide some good learning material. Well, how are we doing expense-wise to the other, the fifth, sixth, and seventh size county that's about the same demographics and same amount of population? So, that's, you know, that's my thought on, you know, just, rather than the, everything has to be within a, you know, two-minute soundbite anymore. But every once in a while, you need a bigger period of time, a longer article. You need to reach out to those reporters and tell them, "I would like you to report this so that people know." That's about all I have to say unless you had any question about my explanation.
No. You gave us some good information, good ideas.
Yeah. It's one of those things where, I know it's, I've been beaten on this for a while, but the courts, they continue to go through and order more and more dollars. And they can show a reduction based on what the previous numbers were, but then they actually didn't reduce a lot in reduction of staff because they were able to get grant dollars. And comparing it to other counties, if you go through and you do ratios, number of population by number of judges, you could actually see a reduction here compared to Cuyahoga County, to Lorraine County, of about two judges. Now, if you wanted to reduce two judges, it's going to take an act of God to pretty much do that, talking with the Supreme Court legislators and everything else. So, this is something that we have that's here that the Board of Commissioners really can't do unless we want to go into litigation against judges. So, take a judge to court. Three, four other counties that, Teresa?
Correct.
And how many won?
None.
None.
And, you know, there are things that you can show that, hey, we're going to question this. Why are you, why do you have an administrator on top of administrator? Well, we need it. This is what the person's doing. Courts are going to, if you take them to court, they're going to side with the judges. So, would I like to see a reduction? Would I like to see more compromise? Absolutely. But in this case, the Board of Commissioners' hands are tied. And trust me, I'm not very happy about it. And I've been working with state legislators to try to get things done down there. But you're fighting, you're working with attorneys at state legislators to try to make a change in the court system. It just doesn't work that well.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Mr. Phelan?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
We will be having another public hearing Monday, August 5th, 2013, at 5:30 PM on the fourth floor in the Commissioner's Hearing Room.
Mr. Cortez?
No further, no further reports this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning, Commissioner.
Commissioner's report.
No report.
Okay. This meet, this week, Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, I serve on the board. We met moving forward, a lot of discussions on the improving economy and where the chamber fits in regards to a lot of discussions. It was a full board meeting. I mean, it was really good. Lynn Miggins did a great job getting everybody there. So, a lot of good engagement in regard to business. I'd like to thank Ted Wallingford from Elyria. He is a businessman here in town, and he led the Rock City Project at Quaker Steak and Lube to benefit Northeast Ohio Easter Seals. Myself, Sheriff Stomidi, Mayor Flanagan from Grafton, and Councilman Marcus Madison were invited to be celebrity bartenders. They didn't need us to bartend, though. So, we had a really nice evening, great bands there, nice turnout. Hope you did a nice job raising money for Easter Seals. I attended the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Display last night at Spitzer in regards to what they've done so far, based on input on how we'd like to see our region move forward. Commissioner Blair was there last night, actually. Grace Galucci, our Director of Nowaka, who's overseeing all of this. And Commissioner Hambley from Medina was there also. Very nice turnout and hope to push this forward, that actually we get something out of this report and it doesn't end up collecting dust somewhere. Also, this morning, a Nowaka conference call that I couldn't quite get through because I couldn't hear through my phone in the office. But talking about Dakota Regulations again, Tom. Also, I got one more thing. I received a letter from Amtrak, and I'll copy the Commissioner's on it. But Beth Tames from Sherrod Brown's office received one also, and she forwarded to Mayor Brenda. Mayor Brenda was excited about in Elyria. Basically, Amtrak is aware of a significant investment. Lorraine County has made an historic depot. Their staff has tried very hard to identify a way to use that facility for passenger rail at a reasonable cost. One challenge, as you know, has been the great sub-rate access to platforms, which has been at a higher cost. Nevertheless, we agree the passenger experience would be improved markedly if our trains could stop at the Transit Center. If certain conditions are met, Amtrak agrees to Lorraine County's request that we relocate the Elyria Passenger Stop to Lorraine County Transportation Center. Further, we pledge $2.9 million toward the cost of doing so. To facilitate a formal path forward for use of these funds, Amtrak would like to work with your staff to promulgate a formal memorandum of understanding with Lorraine County for how these funds will be allocated in defined timeframe. Please continue to work my representative, Derek James. He and Amtrak's F will help ensure modifications. Lorraine County makes Transit Center our compliance, ADA, Amtrak, and railroad. I forwarded this to you, Jim, I believe.
The, there's been a couple of updates since you got there, too.
Okay. Monday? Okay. What's happened since Monday?
Well, you know, clearly, we've been working with Amtrak for...
Nine years?
Nine years. Trying to make this a reality. You know, I'm grateful for the city sending a letter to Amtrak, encouraging them to work with us. But they already were working with us, and we already were working on this. And Amtrak has essentially agreed to be there over the years. We just have not been successful at gaining the cooperation of Norfolk Southern. This latest initiative actually comes out of the larger discussions I had with the Federal Transportation Administration in Chicago with respect to our transportation assets here in Lorraine County. I think I talked to you about that over the last couple of weeks. They're coming down next week. We're kind of under the microscope right now because of all the reductions in transit. We have, we have a lot of dollars wrapped up in the Transportation Center. We have a maintenance garage for the buses. We have an old office space for, that used to belong to the Transportation Board, excuse me, the Transit Board. So, I've been working with them, and one of the things is they're, you know, they're not exactly satisfied that we haven't gotten train service at the Transportation Center. And as I told them, you're beating up the wrong people here. We've done everything possible to make this a reality. If you want to really help us, stop picking on us and start putting the weight of the federal government onto the people that are blocking this project. So, after some additional difficult discussion, they agreed to do that. And it was nice to have them back in the queue as a partner because they had been an early partner for quite a few years. And we're supposed to have actually a very large meeting of all the stakeholders with regard to this. But I was just reading an email from Norfolk Southern. As usual, they found a reason not to go to the meeting, and now they're requesting additional information and suggesting that they may be able to attend the meeting sometime in September or October. I've told you before about working with the rail folks, how difficult and challenging it has been, not simply on the transit project, but also even we got to put a sewer under the right-of-way or we need ditches cleaned along the right-of-way. It's always a large undertaking. It took us two years, one just to put a sewer line under a train track. Two years to get there, a buy-off, to move that process. So, we're going to keep pushing, but the FTA is bringing some significant pressure onto them to join us at the table. I believe there's enough money available with the commitment from Amtrak and the remaining funds. And that's another thing I talked to FTA extensively about. We still have about, I want to say $900,000 to $1 million wrapped up in an old earmark that we haven't converted to a grant yet. Which should have been converted to a grant a couple of years ago, or it should have expired. But we've worked with the, with the FTA folks to keep that money available to us. But they're growing very, very...
Weary?
Well, I would say anxious because now they're a bit on the deep end of where their regulations allow them to be with regard to releasing and holding funds for projects. In fact, we've exceeded any reasonable expectation of them working with us, and they continue to do that. I believe that they, they have partnered with us very well. But they're getting questioned now from above, from their folks above. So, we have to make this a project a reality pretty quick or we stand to lose almost a million dollars that could be used on the platforms in conjunction with, with Amtrak's 2.8 million. So, this has been ongoing for a number of years. We've gotten close before. It seems we're getting closer again, but you can see we have a, the people that control the access and the rails and everything that's going to go on up there is Norfolk Southern. And without their acceptance, nothing will occur. So, we'll keep you in the loop, let you know how it goes. But it looks like this meeting isn't going to take place as anticipated, at least with them at the table. And without them at the table, it's highly unlikely we're going to accomplish anything. We can design all we want, but if the property owner isn't going to let us build a house on their land, the discussion's going to be fruitless at the end of the day. So, I'll be in touch with FTA today to talk about a strategy with regard to postponing the meeting and getting information that they've requested to them, which they've had before, and seeing if we can't make sure that we get a meeting sometime in September, if that's what they're saying, or early October.
Thank you, Jim.
Sorry, I know it's your report, but I just wanted to give it up.
No, that's what I was asking. I was bringing it to it. So, that's the end of my report. I just wanted to let everybody know that I received a letter, and Amtrak is willing to partner with us. So, let's see if we can get Norfolk and Southern to do the same.
Yeah. Holly Brenda, or Mayor Brenda was very excited about it. Was out on the Route 57 with ODOT, talking about the expansion that's going to go on there due to the bonding of the turnpike. And good news is they're actually going to start the project, it looks like, in May of next year. Also...
We have to, just to add to that, I met with Grace Galucci. We're going to move some funds over in regards to Nowaka's dollars to get the local funding to push that project. I met with Grace last night on that. So, yeah, the project should move fast.
Yeah. They said that, hoping to break ground in May. While I had the director here, you know, I was shewing on his ear how I wasn't too happy with the number of dollars coming into Lorraine County versus Cuyahoga County. And he told me that there were some future projects that could be done. One thing that they looked at, and you're going to have to go back and look at again, is further expansion of I-90 Route 2, going to a three-lane highway. When I drive home and go past Route 58, the Amherst-Lorraine exit, it's actually backed up onto Route 2, possibly going, continuing it from Avon all the way out to Oak Point Road. We're going to have a meeting coming up in September, looks like maybe September 16th, if you're available. Sit down with the mayors and ODOT to see if this is something that we would want to go forward with. We'll have to do a study on it, make sure the traffic numbers are there, which I think they will be. But we'll have to get the justification, and then also looking at some other projects that other mayors have brought up to me that they think need to be done, so.
Talking on both sides of the highway?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a lot of infrastructure.
Because I'm thinking of Sheffield Village and Avon and all, you know, Avon Lake, all those off of Route 2, they back up to.
The...
Well, it's already three lanes through 611, Commissioner. That was a fight in the late 90s, Commissioner Blair, when you almost blew up Nowaka at the time.
Right. But yes, Sheffield, Avon border right there.
They're already three lanes there, but they don't have it.
So, it'd be an expansion from 611 to Oak Point. The road construction, the material to actually put the road down, that's not the cost. It's going to be looking at, making sure we don't have any flooding issues like we did with the turnpike when they expanded. And then, also putting up the walls to make sure that you don't have the additional noise bothering the neighbors, the homeowners.
And they've also got, I mean, they're working on the bridges to go anyway. So, that's part of it, but...
Yeah. I think there's only one bridge in between there that would need to be reworked. So, I spoke with Mayor Hunter from Sheffield Village regarding that. So, if you could keep the 16th open, we're going to look at having a meeting there, so. And... Had a busy week. Oh, softball game.
Yeah. I thought for sure it was going to be rained out. I just think they'd let you play on the field.
Well, we ended up moving out to the grass. We did a scrimmage on it because we didn't get a lot of people coming because everyone thought it was canceled. So, just for trash talking and everything else to have a good time, we went out there and played. They had the Lorraine Fire Chief out there, Tim Brown?
Tom Brown.
Tom Brown. And the guy's, I mean, he's older than I am, but great player. So, I told him I'm going to have him tested before the actual game coming up here in August.
That was a hell of a six inning you had, huh, Tom?
Well, you know, I was...
Grant Lambert, Ameritt, and Bob Fowler got you next?
Well, I was being very generous with my pitching.
Okay.
So, I wanted to make sure that they were having a good time. It was, it was a tie game up there, 15-15, and, you know, I felt bad for it.
What was your ERA for that game?
You know, I don't know, but I did go four for five with two home runs, so. I brought in the majority of the runs for the Republican groups. But it was a great event, and, you know, Dennis Flores was quite the picture up there with the purple bat. And so was Leon Mason out there batting. And I can't believe how quick Leon is. I mean, he was running those bases. And I think I would have had a heart attack when I hit home plate, how fast he was running. The one highlight of my day, though, it's going, Matt Lundey was up to bat. I threw him a pitch. He grounded it out right to me, so I got to throw him out, so. That was a nice one.
I was ready. I put my Obama T-shirt on and everything. I'm going to that game. And I thought, no, it's going to rain. It's raining.
Well, we are going to do a makeup.
Good.
We're either, we're looking at August 24th, but that's right with the end of the fair, so we may have to move it out to September. But a good event, and, you know, once we get the schedule, you should definitely come out and see it. Get to see a bunch of elected officials and staff trying to relive their glory days. And I felt bad for, was it Ray Carion that was playing?
He fell down a couple of times.
Yeah, running around, and he, he hit, hit second base, and there was a puddle there. Went down very hard, but he had a nice home run, too, so can't complain. Good times. End of my report.
The Commissioner's also sent retirement proclamations to Richard Pope, 27 years of the Bridge, and Audrey Ward, 23 years at Golden Acres. Board correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Phelan?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning, like to join us? Don't want to talk, Alyssa? You're here visiting? You sure? She's interning with Main Street Elyria this year. Her father is Tim Elkhorn, the sports guy from WOL. I'll make a motion to move an executive session as outlined by the county executive. Yeah, nothing from the prosecutor. I mean, county administrator. Jim Smith was here. Executive popped in my mind.
Mr. Phelan?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.